I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin tonight's meeting of the Board of Selectmen, I'm Lisa Hevner. We hold Board of Selectmen meetings once or twice a month to conduct the town's business as part of our meetings. We do offer public audience and welcome members of the public who have anything to say. Mr. Causman?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, I missed getting the person.
Thank you for the privilege to allow me to address the board. And I like, I like to start out by, in the Marine Corps, which I'm very proud of, we have a saying in people and we're taught that you'll never be left behind. If you're out there, somebody will always go out there and get you and bring you back. And they'll bring you back whether you're wounded, dead, we'll keep our promise to you, we'll take you home. And I read in the paper of a Marine from Southwick, Lieutenant Richard Vincent, that was killed in the battle for Terwara in 1944, the bloodiest battle in the South Pacific. It surmounts what went on at Iwo Jima, but Terwara was the bloodiest. And he was put in a grave with 500 other Marines and buried in a mass grave. And his, his family, his mother and dad, were notified that he was killed in action, missing in action, and that was it. The Marine Corps kept their promise 70 years later. When they were developing an airport or runway on Terwara, they discovered the grave with the 500 Marines. And what they did was, and the battle was so fierce, that it was mixed with Japanese and Marines, and they were all thrown into one, one mass grave. And when they found the dog tags, the grave registration in the Marine Corps and the Army went through the trouble of getting the DNA of a family that had no longer existed and bringing this Marine back after 70 years. And they buried him in Southwick. The sad part of it, or the touching part of it is that the, the mother died first in 1950, the dad died next, and there was nobody left. The father had left the marker of the son without a body. And they came back, your Marine Corps came back, and they buried him. And we, just to prove to people, the Marines will never forget you. And that's what I thought, I just mentioned this because it's in view of how some people think of the Marine Corps. We're very proud of it and we honor our fallen comrades. Now, I noticed at the last meeting, Mr. Shewitzki went through great events, and incidentally, why is he still on the payroll? We have a, we have an engineer, we're paying him, why do we need two engineers? Why is Rich Shewitzki still on the payroll? But nevertheless, he presented a program to apply for a grant for six miles of bike trail, which you people approved of. We need roads in Simsbury, we don't need bike trails. You all, you all drive. We have, one of your members here has a business and he's using the roads day and night with heavy trucks. He knows what the conditions of the roads are, probably costs him a fortune in axles that are broken riding on these deplorable roads. They need to be fixed. Route 10, drive it, you all drive it, I drive it, it's all potholes. And you're, and you're applying for a grant for a bike trail? What about the roads? And the other, the other thing, Simsbury is corrupt. The whole 5th District is corrupt. And I hope you people that are party members, when you go to your conventions, make sure there's no corruption, that everything is done in the hall, not in the back room, or not over a phone. Because the 5th District is corrupt. And if you want to challenge me and debate me, you want to debate me on the gentleman from Waterbury, you want to date, I should say gentleman, the two gentlemen, because I have another story I can share with you.
Mr. Causman, if you could wrap up, we very much appreciate it.
Okay, I'm gonna wrap up.
Thank you.
All right. In any event, to stop the corruption, Harford, Simsbury should go back to Harford County and it should be the 1st District.
Thank you.
And I'll leave the marijuana factory that the Democratic Party gave us and this board gave us, I'll leave that for another time.
Thank you, Mr. Causman. Anyone else? Joan?
I would like to speak, thank you very much. Joan Coe, candidate for First Selectmen in the town of Simsbury. I am the only candidate for First Selectmen that will change the charter to have a town manager as the CEO and eliminate the position of First Selectmen. Simsbury needs professional management. We don't ask a PTO president to be superintendent of schools. Why should we want an unaccredited person to manage the town? I have lived in town for over 40 years and have worked for the Board of Education as a substitute teacher, and I have worked for the town in the Recreation Department as a tennis and platform teacher instructor and organized programs. I am capable of managing the town until a professional town manager is appointed. I am concerned that on Wednesday, July 8th, the Performing Arts promoted a slightly stupid concert that encourages the use of marijuana. This is a picture of the High Times, which sponsored the, had the slightly stupid concert. And not only did they encourage it, but they also told everyone to light up, and they did, with concert goers and volunteers inhaling secondhand marijuana smoke. The Slightly Stupid Band was featured in High Times, which is a marijuana magazine, as a band promoting the use of marijuana. YouTube showed the Simsbury Slightly Stupid Concert with clouds of smoke in the air. I addressed my concerns to First Selectmen Lisa Hevner, who told me that marijuana use is illegal and should not be used on town property. However, it appears that all people vetting the gathering permits refuse to deny the Slightly Stupid Band from entertaining at the Performing Arts. Didn't anyone research their lyrics on marijuana use, their song called Marijuana? It is also alleged that the next concert, Willie Nelson, also attracts concert goers that use marijuana at the concert. Are these concerts promoting the use of marijuana in violation of the town contract with the Performing Arts? After the Slightly Stupid Concert, a person was found passed out, had slumped in her car, and taken to the hospital, case number 16838. Although there are signs stating no tailgating at parking lots, they could not be enforced since Simsbury does not have an ordinance restricting tailgating. One person was taken home for public intoxication, case number 16809. Why is First Selectmen Lisa Hevner more concerned about noise at concerts than she is about illegal use of marijuana on town property? How can First Selectmen Lisa Hevner endorse a community for care, a parent's guide for the prevention of alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs used, and allow concert goers to smoke marijuana at a concert on town property? Is First Selectmen Lisa Hevner delusional? Has Kerm, the town's insurance agent, been made aware of the illegal activity on town property and the risks to the town? The Hartford Symphony Concert on July 3rd with fireworks created a dangerous situation when large unexpected crowds were unable to pick up their tickets at the Will Call booth and the lines extended to Wilcox Street. I had a conversation with the security guard prior to the concerts, and he told me that Simsbury is not equipped to have large crowds at events. Cars were parked all over the roads and accidents occurred. There were not enough handicap parking spots since they were sharing space with priority parking. A person was arrested for DUI evading, case number 16399. The dispatch lines were busy all night and only one dispatcher on duty. I would recommend that the Performing Arts pay for another dispatcher during concerts so that calls can be answered in a timely manner. The Senior Center at the Performing Arts is still being studied by staff, although it is in the wetlands, an environmentally challenged area that eventually be dismissed as a site. We presently are paying for an architect to develop a building where the placement is not approved, and we are spending up to $10,000 for a consultant to tell us what program should be implemented without any space provided for the programs. We presently are having the tail wagging the dog. The least expensive way to generate interest in Senior Center programs is to place and insert in the Continuing Education booklet that is distributed to the entire town. Last night I attended the Democratic Caucus and was surprised by the vicious and vindictive statements-
Thank you, Ms. Coe, your time is up.
...made during the nominating process.
Thank you, Ms. Coe.
After much discussion, I was allowed to discuss my platform-
Thank you, Ms. Coe.
-of town manager and my accomplishments to the Democratic Town Committee.
Ms. Coe, you're out of order, can you please stop?
And I have one more question. Now that Hira Peck, Simsbury planner, is leaving Simsbury and going to Avon, I would like to have-
Thank you, Ms. Coe, you're out of order.
It is time to stop.
...the moratorium.
Thank you, Ms. Coe.
Joan Coe, your way to go.
Thank you, Ms. Coe.
For First Selectmen.
Mr. Causman, I am as well, you're both out of order.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Simsbury.com, Simsbury Pat, Simsbury com.
Out of order.
And Simsbury, at Joan Coe on Twitter. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate everyone's comments.
I know you appreciated the comments.
Thank you very much. Ms. Coe, you're out of order, please stop. All right, we will now move on to the First Selectmen's report. My name is Lisa Hevner. I just want to give the First Selectmen's report. There will be an Aging and Disability Commission's Simsbury Special Education Parent/Teacher Organization event at, I'm sorry, at the Saint Catherine of Siena Church. One of the great events here in Simsbury is the picnic in the park for Simsbury residents with disabilities and families with disabled residents. The event is being sponsored by the town of Simsbury's Aging and Disability Commission and the Simsbury Special Education Parent/Teacher Organization, SEPTO. This is the first time SEPTO is co-sponsoring it and we welcome their participation, that's a great addition. The picnic will be held on Saturday, August 22nd, at Saint Catherine of Siena Church from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m., and there will be lots of activities, music, as well as an ice cream truck and Canes Market. If you'd like to attend, please RSVP to Diana Yaisley at yaisley2@comcast.net, or call the Simsbury Senior Center at 860-658-3273, and we hope to see you there. The Simsbury Social Services Department wanted to let our residents know that we are offering a back-to-school program for Simsbury families. It's already July 23rd, and almost time to start planning for back-to-school. Can I have a groan?
Yeah.
Too soon.
I don't think any parents are actually disappointed with that, though.
No.
To help Simsbury families get ready, our Social Services Department is once again offering its back-to-school program. Eligible families will receive a Walmart gift certificate to purchase clothes or school supplies for their children. To be eligible, families must be enrolled in state or local social service programs, and if you would like to set an appointment or get additional information, you can call the Social Services Department at 860-658-3282. The Hartford Symphony on Friday night will close out their Talcon Mountain Music Festival with the music of Queen. Tomorrow night should be a beautiful night for the concert. Friday night's Hartford Symphony Concert will feature the music of Queen. It is the last concert for this summer's Talcon Mountain Music Festival. We've been very fortunate to have the Hartford Symphony in town, and I encourage anyone who has not been to a concert, you have to go, because they are a lot of fun.
Of course.
That's a great way to spend an evening. And we are ready to move on to action items. The first action before you is a motion to approve tax refunds in the amount of $16,112.54. May I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item B in your packets is a motion to approve four public gathering applications. The first is for September 20th, the Simsbury Fly-In. That approval, when we make the motion, will be contingent upon getting Health District approval. The October 4th Shred Kids Cancer Rock the Run 5K, that approval will also be contingent upon getting Health District approvals. This is a first-time event, and it will use the Simsbury Meadows and Greenways and has no rural closures associated with it. December, the third event is September 13th, the Second Annual Latimer Lane PTO Road Race and Fun Run. You were in your packets, you should have received additional information on that. Okay. And then the fourth event is the October 31st Simsbury Chamber of Commerce Halloween Festival and Celebration at Sims Pack, open to the public from noon to 6:00. That also includes a chili cook-off. I'll take, on this one, I'll take two motions, one for the first two events that require the Health District approval, and the other for the other two that are also.
Can I just ask a quick question on the Latimer Lane one? That's, is it the 13th or the 14th? I'm seeing two different dates on the...
Where are you seeing two different dates?
On the front of the submission, it says-
September 13th.
-September 13th, and on the back, it says application September 14th. And the only reason I ask is I-
Cheryl, if you look at the handout, it has September 13th there as well.
It's their actual submission.
Okay. And is that the same weekend as September Fest?
It is.
Is that a problem, or that's not a problem?
If this went through public gathering, I think they probably accounted for that.
Well, this one is not at the Sims Pack, the Latimer Lane Fun Run isn't, that's by the school?
Okay, thank you.
Actually, the 14th is a Monday, so it's, yeah, the 13th.
It's the 13th.
It must be the 13th, yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just ask a quick question, too?
Sure.
Has Public Safety looked at the fly-in submission?
They've all been looked at. The thing that's missing, that they were not able to do at the, at the fly-in is the Health District, so that one-
So I presume they made some changes to the proximity that people were allowed to the runway, given prior events and-
Oh, right.
-some other challenges?
I don't have the specifics of what they require, but it does-
But if they signed off on it, then I'm sure.
That's what we have.
We had a bit of an issue a couple of years ago. All right.
Well, I will say that our Public Safety does take it very seriously, and this is also monitored by the FAA. They have someone on site, I believe.
Yeah, it was, the plane wasn't in the air anymore is when the problem was. So, all right. So I move to approve the public gathering permits for the September 20th Fly-In and October 4th Shred Kids Cancer Rock the Run.
Subject to?
Subject to the Health District approvals.
Second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on those two? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I have a second motion approving the September 13th Second Annual Latimer Lane PTO Road Race and the October 31st Simsbury Chamber of Commerce Halloween Festival Celebration.
I'll move those.
Second.
Any further discussion on those? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to Action Item C. You have before you potential action on Declaration of Easements, Covenants, and Restrictions for the Powdered Forest Business Park. This went through zoning on Monday night and received, I believe, unanimous support. What this is, this is a request by Ensign Bickford Realty Corporation to terminate the Declaration of Easements, Covenants, and Restrictions at the Powdered Forest Business Park due to a pending sale of the property. We have from the submission through Hira that there is no negative financial obligation created in this action. In fact, as the properties are sold and developed in accordance with zoning regulations applicable to them, there will be significant positive financial gain to the town. Some time ago, these restrictive covenants were more common many years ago, and they're less common now because of new zoning laws, so that, that's why the shift is coming. We did, Mr. Cook did confirm with Mr. Peck that there, there were a couple of comments made by Mr. Bob DiCrescenzo of things that we needed to be conscious of. He said that the zoning board was aware of the-
That's correct.
-comments that he highlighted for them.
In fact, if you don't mind, he notes in the end of his submission that the approval of the express level of many authorities, the applicable energy scores, that regard to application review of approval enforcement, so, which I think is key. The other thing I would note and should be added to the submission is that the final termination declaration document should be reviewed by council, so this approval should be subject to that review.
As is typical of a final approval by council.
Exactly.
Motion.
I'll take a motion?
I'll take a motion to approve the termination of declaration regarding the Powdered Forest Business Park pursuant to the suggestions received from town attorney about reviewing the, the termination reviewed and approved by the town attorney at the closing documents, so they were in compliance.
So, subject to council review?
Council review, yeah.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
All right. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Oh, one point, Lisa.
Yes.
On the submission, the date is actually, it says June 23rd, 15, it's actually July 23rd. I don't think it changes anything.
No, we can change that.
Just to, I don't want it to blow up in our face.
Kathy, can you just let the record reflect that we changed the submission to July 23rd, 2015? Thank you.
Does this mean we lose our dump area?
For the next storm?
The storm, I should say.
Let's hope we never need that again.
We're not having another one of those.
It was a storm of the century, so we had 96-year pass.
Let's hope we never need it again.
Right. So we have a motion from Mr. Payne, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously, thank, thank you. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the evening, it's really exciting. We have lots of fun stuff going on. Yeah, actually, we are moving right along, so. Item D, this is something that generally does not have to come before the Board of Selectmen, but the Board has a request of me that when we do an application, that I just let you know. This is not a requirement that we accept an application, it doesn't obligate the town in any way. It is only a submission, and it in no way binds the town, but, but in the interest of transparency, as you have requested, I wanted to bring this to your attention. There's a quick deadline on submitting this application, comes on August 5th. Once that deadline passes, we're not sure when additional funds of this type will become available. Sort of interesting, this is for the taking down or tearing down of the Betty Hudson property, and it's through FEMA. So that's an unusual grant application. But, if you recall, when we bought the property, part of the impetus for purchasing it was because we recognized that this was a danger in the flood area, and that we did want to remove it as a residence in a flood area. So it is consistent with the reason why we bought it. You'll notice that Open Space has not yet made its recommendation to this board. We did have the tri-board meeting of Open Space Parks and Rec and Conservation, and there, there was a consensus that to do less is more and to possibly take down the building. I did mention the grant at that time, and there was no objection to thinking about it that way. The recommendation will come from Open Space, that they're meeting in August, and then it will come to this board on August 10th. So if you get a recommendation that says keep the house, we can withdraw the application for the theme. Or if you say that the Open Space says take the house down, and this board says keep the house, we can withdraw it. We're in no way obligated to use this grant. It just gives us an option that we wouldn't otherwise have with the deadline coming upon us.
Just a question, that when we were talking about this, if the house does come down, it negates the possibility of building. In other words, then it's, it's-
But, not entirely.
Not entirely, okay, okay.
Because if you, if you leave part of the foundation, that's why we wouldn't, it takes a long, it takes a little while to get this grant. So we would have the opportunity to engage a landscape architect who could work with us. I'm anticipating that one of the recommendations will be a gazebo or some sort of pavilion in that area that's open and that floodwaters can flow through, that's not a floodwater issue, and that may be that we have to use an existing-
Foundation.
-foundation. So any tear-down will incorporate the needs of what we're going to build in the future. With that in mind, if the recommendation by the architect or by this committee is not to tear down the building, we don't have to use the grant. I can tell you, we will not have the grant by our next meeting. I feel confident that it does move a little bit slow. And we do have funds, there is a match, it's 75% of the demolition activities, but if you'll recall, we did appropriate that additional $50,000 to deal with issues such as this, so we could use-
And the purchase.
And this would actually reduce the amount we need to spend because there would be grants available. So there is no additional budgetary transfers that we would have to make if we were to get the grant, if, if by some means we get it. And we are optimistic because this is an afford zone.
Right. I'll authorize the submission of a grant application for the demolition of the existing structure on the town-owned property located at One Old Bridge Road.
Second.
Second, I'll just reiterate for the public, by authorizing the submission of the grant does not mean we have made a decision about whether to tear down the building at all, it just gives us a funding option if we just, if we do make that decision. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Moving on, we'll go to update on the Senior Center project. I'll turn to Mr. Cook to see if you have any dates, I didn't tell him.
Really have nothing new to report.
Other than we met with the programmer.
That is true, that's since our last meeting as well, so that is, that is news here. The programmer who works as a professor at Fordham University came in toward the property, met with not only the Senior Center staff, but with a number of the seniors as well. And so he's introduced himself to them, he was, they had a very good talk, I think the seniors appreciated, but the substance of this presentation and the fact that he was there. He's met with library staff and with Culture Parks and Rec staff as well, he's familiarizing himself with the various programming options we had out there.
And I'd just like to point out, this was suggested just actually many years ago by a combination of Peggy Shanks and Mike Wong, to bring in an expert on Senior Center programming. And to begin there, the reason why we brought them in is, you want to build a building that meets the needs of the programs you currently need now to meet the needs of your seniors, but that you're going to need into the future. You don't want to build a building first and then say, okay, whoops, we didn't think about this need, whoops, we didn't think about that need. What he's doing, one of the things Simsbury does wonderfully is we offer many programs for seniors, there's a lot in the library, Parks and Rec, obviously the Senior Center. And so we asked him to take a comprehensive look at everything we offer for our seniors so that we could get a whole look and see what we have, what we're missing, and what we're going to need as the years progress. He is one of the leading experts in the nation. He has, he was able to give us a tremendous history of senior centers in general. So he will be coming back to town, hopefully he'll come before this board sometime in the near future. He is a lovely, lovely person, and we feel very fortunate to have him assisting us and with his expertise.
Good.
I'm actually, I'm really looking forward to having all that information available to seniors, because a lot of times we hear that people just aren't aware of some of the really great programs that we offer, because we do have, you know, the programming spread out over different departments, which is great, because everybody has their expertise. But I, I think this will be a valuable asset, you know, and a resource.
And one of the things, yeah, so one of the things he did talk about is how do we get our left hand talking with our right?
Exactly.
And what the Senior Center offers in their newsletter versus what the library offers versus what Parks and Rec versus what continuing ed, can we get it all in one location so that we are-
Exactly.
-one, not overlapping the programming we're doing, and so that, and also that we're complementing each other with the needs and the programs we're putting out. So that was one of the main discussions, is how do we, even if we never ever build a Senior Center, I'm not saying that, this will be useful because it will help us to coordinate on what we're already doing.
I totally agree, yeah.
So, it was fascinating stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And we are still pursuing the Senior Center option. So, coming after that, we'll go to appointments and resignations. The first one we have is the appointment of Jeffrey Tyndall of 312 Firetown Road, Simsbury, Connecticut, 06070, to complete the term of Michael Wade on the Board of Education ending December 7th, 2015. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The motion passes unanimously. You have before you a motion to appoint Charter, the Charter Revision Subcommittee, Democrats and Republicans. An unaffiliated member has not been selected. I'm going to ask for a motion on that in a little bit, but we'll start if we could have a motion to appoint Democrats Jeffrey Tyndall, Mary Glassman, Melissa Osborne, who is here tonight. Thank you for coming, Melissa. Anita Miller, Republicans Paul Henault, Lydia Tadone, Thomas Benash?
Benaki.
Benaki, okay. Thank you. And Ed Pappich.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
It's like a Connecticut Bar Association meeting.
Actually, it's a very impressive group, and I'm very appreciative that they have stepped up. This is an opportunity...
And we are all appreciative of that service.
Yeah, this is an opportunity for us as citizens to think about how we govern ourselves. When people think about the government, it's not some abstract people. It's the people who shop in the fifth street. It's people who live in your neighborhood. Government is just us.
Do you have anything else with this?
Yes, I do. We have before you, we also need to appoint an unaffiliated member of the Charter Commission, and we also need to appoint an unaffiliated member of the Ethics Committee. So my suggestion to this board is rather than appointing two subcommittees, we appoint one to make those decisions, if that is acceptable to this board.
It's acceptable to me, if it's acceptable to Sean, and...
I was going to say, did we already have a Charter Subcommittee?
We do have a Subcommittee that's looking at... Basically, they're going to give us that task as well.
Pretty much.
So we're just adding to your task?
Yes. That was the idea.
Okay, just so we know, we already have one existing.
Yeah, and I'm on board with that.
And that's Sean and Chris.
Right.
I'm good with that.
So if everyone is acceptable with that, we will take a motion to expand or create anyone, as you'd like. I'll let the motion make her make that call.
Fine with expanding your duties.
Okay, so would you like to make that motion?
I would.
I'll second that, I guess.
Okay, so the motion is to expand the Charter...
The Charter Revision Subcommittee to include appointing the unaffiliated member of the Board of Ethics.
And Kathy, for the record, that includes Chris Kelly and Sean Askin will be making that.
Oh, I'm sorry, oops.
Okay, and Nancy?
My second, yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have before us a motion to accept the resignation of Nancy M. Hossi as a regular member of the Board of Selectmen effective July 24, 2015. Nancy, you and I have not always agreed, but it has been my pleasure to serve with you.
And mine, to serve with you.
It has been an honor. So you know it's hard to put your name on a ballot. It's hard to step forward. It's hard to be in this office. I appreciate all that you've done and grateful for your service.
Thank you very much.
May I have a motion?
In our, as our custom practice, I will not move, but we will acknowledge the resignation, because I don't think we should be accepting it, but we have no choice but to acknowledge it.
That is correct.
Mm-hmm.
May I have a second acknowledgement?
I'll second that acknowledgement.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Nancy?
I would vote to acknowledge that.
We have before you some gifts.
Oh!
So this is from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
And some flowers.
Thank you all. Oh, my goodness. Cheryl also gave me these.
I gave her tissues.
Mike commented that he was going to give me two-ply toilet paper, but he didn't get down to the bathroom.
You're a classy girl.
So if I might, and I will not go on, because I was the one that asked for a early-start tour meeting and a speedy move through it, because I have a party to go to. But I do want to say what an honor it has been to serve. It's been a long, long journey. It's not just the four and a half years on the board, but it's been serving the town from being a part of the Performing Arts Center Committee that raised the funds to build that building, to being Vice Chair of the Economic Development Commission, serving as a member of the ZBA, and then, of course, on the Board of Selectmen and as your deputy for Selectmen. And I do want to thank this board. It is an honor and a pleasure to have served with all of you. I did also want to thank staff. A lot of the discussions, deliberations, decisions that we make, we wouldn't get to do all this fun work if you guys didn't do all your work, so I really do appreciate all of that. And I would just like to take a moment to also recognize Hiram Peck, because in my work, I've worked very closely with him over a number of years, and it's a loss for the town that he is leaving, and I just wanted to say what an outstanding, well-respected, and award-winning planner that he is, and acknowledge him as well. I have to thank my boss, at my job, who has allowed me the flexibility to run, serve, and do all that I've done, morning meetings, evening meetings, daytime meetings, and all of that. Thank the voters for voting for me three times. I came at them twice pretty quickly out of the gate, special election on March 1st and again that November, and then November 2013, and none of this would be possible without my husband and my family. Get the tissues. Anything and everything I have done has been made possible by the meals I haven't made, the pickups I haven't made at various places, and carting my kids off and doing the things that we all do to do what we do. And so I really would like to say a special thank you to them, and they've been my rock and support through all of that, and that's all I have. I think that was pretty good for me, who tends to chat on too much.
Well, I'm not letting you go, because we have a motion. Like I said, so not so fast. So we do have a motion to appoint Nancy Hossi as a regular member of the Economic Development Task Force with an expiration date of December 7, 2015.
I will happily make that motion.
May I have a second?
I'll happily second it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously.
I can't really vote for myself.
Can I vote for myself?
Uh, no. No.
Well, technically, I have tilted. Thank you. You're not getting rid of me as quickly as you think, so I really do appreciate that. I know when I went and talked to Lisa about my plans, it was my hope to continue to share that and to continue to work with that great group of people. And we've brought some things before you that I think have been very beneficial to the town, and we're looking forward to bringing more things before the board, so I will be over there instead of over here. I will not wear a bowtie. I do not bring cookies like Bob Hensley, but looking forward to doing that, so, thank you.
You're welcome. We have now review of the minutes. Would anyone like to make a motion to change any of the minutes? We've got the special meeting of June 22, 2015, the regular meeting of June 22, 2015, and the special meeting of June 29, 2015.
Nope. But good.
Moving on, then, we will go on to Selectmen Liaison and Subcommittee Reports. We do have a report and update and possible motion from personnel, and I'll turn it over to Chris.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. So last week, the Personnel Subcommittee met, as we were asked by the Water Pollution Control Authority to review and approve a revised job description that they have, moving the position from the Engineering Associate, grade A, to Engineering Inspector, grade A3+. The key changes that are part of this redesign, and this was a redesign approved and budgeted by the WPCA, the formality is the Personnel Subcommittee and the Board of Selectmen has to approve this change. But the key things that are driving the change is that this new individual who will be hired into the role is expected to have broader responsibilities with the GIS and AutoCAD software, is also expected to do more participation and support of inspections than the current role does. And if you look through here, a lot of these are really an expansion of administrative duties and consulting duties and more self-management than the individual had previously. And so subsequently, that's what justified the expansion and the changes that you can see here. So with that said, I would just, you know, make a motion that we approve the job description of Engineering Inspector, WPCF, grade A3+.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved unanimously. Are there any other Selectmen Liaison or Subcommittee Reports?
If I had, just to expand a little bit on your Picnic in the Park mention, which I'm very happy about, as a liaison to Aging and Disability, this is an event they work on all year long and are very proud of, and I've been proud to attend as a, both a participant of Aging and Disability and the parent of a disabled person. And I would encourage all families in Simsbury who have a disabled person in their family to attend. It's an opportunity to get together, to socialize, to do so without any barrier or stigma attached,